Good evening, K L A, I'm Cassandra Sadie. I'm here with Ida Bliss. I'd just like to read it to you real quick and let you know if you've got any responses. City Manager Kelly did get back to me with a lot of resolutions that I think they have to take care of. The people who brought the issue up haven't been notified. I'd be glad to catch up with them personally, what was told to me. But what we've got left at this point is, the residents in North Beach still would like a notification when the roads are going to be closed. We want a status of the library and lamppost repair. There's no removal ordinance. The flagrant program updated, if there is any. The lighting on multifamily residences issue, what you've decided on that. And if you've decided, you know we talk about it, we don't think it's a good idea, we're not doing it. It gets crossed off, but at least we can see it's there and everybody knows. We still have the mystery position of Director of Licenses. If there is no such thing, just let us know, there's no such thing. There were some streetlights on Madison. The man says there's no such thing. There's some streetlights on Madison that were reported as out. I know Mayor Campbell did tell me she was going to check and see what the addresses were. The CO procedure is on for tonight. Public Works is waiting for Warner to tell them what binds on trees. We wanted to know the status of the HUD plan. The status of the decals on all the cities. I understand that we're S3 have been ordered and will be put on. What you've decided about putting GPSs in all city vehicles. How about the reentry program? Do we have any status on that? Thirty vacancies on the city committees. The public opinion of the bump outs. Remember, this was a trial. We tried the bump outs. Do they work? Or do we not do any more in the city? Should Asbury Park referred to the separate positions for the public works and the engineer positions? The light fixtures in front of convention hall are broken. Are there any plans for more committees for residents to join? We need a list of nonprofits that was going to be given to special events applications. What is the plan to tackle Pato? Also, I'm afraid I'll mention that again tonight. What is the plan to tackle crime on DeWitt? And is there any news on the street sweeper? And tonight I added the footbridge.
All right. I could do two seconds on flagmen, because I met with Jack today about it. And Cassandra, figuring out if we can use CDBG money, whether we are RP, we need proposals, we go through a nonprofit. So, I mean, the update is that we're still, you know, working it out. But we had a lengthy conversation about trying to get that program back up and running again.
The light fixtures in front of City Hall. Matter of fact, we talked about this this morning. Yes, they're going to be getting fixed.
You mean Convention Hall?
Convention Hall, sorry.
Is that a city project to do that?
No.
That's Madison Marquette, was my story.
Well, it's a conjunction of the other star, but it's going to get fixed.
As far as Pato's, I give Joe Coon a lot of credit. Right now, Stavola, whoever wasn't making cold patch or hot patch, and he's going to truck up to Jordan, Jersey, and we got 12 tons of it, and they are after fixing this quick and say, okay.
At PM, the reentry program. Kevin Sanders and I are going to be working on that. We're going to be meeting next week, and we have a call in Cory Booker's. He's his manager, whoever you want to talk to. Because we're trying to actually get him back down here so that we can have a meeting with him.
The library light?
That's that. We got hit next year. That was the fall of 2011.
Thank you.
Yeah, because whoever hit him, I'm sure.
We're not positive.
I asked Bob Stewart that, and he went into it. That's something that we can track down from Jack. Appreciate it.
Joyce Grant, Asbury Park. Wonderful job, Em. Anyway, first I want to give thanks to the newest council members for bringing Bradley Cove issue to the forefront. All of the land east of Ocean Avenue is in Asbury Park. Our beaches and boardwalk is public land. In other words, the land belongs to all the people in Asbury Park. All public lands are held in trust for the American people by the federal, state, and local governments. The oceans belong to all peoples all over the world. All rivers, streams, lakes move towards and into our oceans. Federal, state, and local governments in the U.S., a government for and by the people, are simply the managers and stewards of public lands and public spaces. The managers of these public lands must ensure open and accessible entry, protect and preserve for the people our beaches and our boardwalks. There is no better way to do this at Asbury Park than by creating a People's Public Park at the north end oceanfront in Asbury Park to protect and preserve the last natural oceanfront public area from residential and commercial development in our beloved city. Lastly, just a reminder to all of us, if we lose the sweetness of our waters, we lose the life of the land. If we lose the life of the land, we lose our plant life and forests. If we lose our plant life and forests, we lose the purity of our air. If we lose the purity of our air, we lose all the peoples and creatures of the earth, both now and in the future. Thank you.
Good evening. Warren Ross of the side community, Center 115, Dwood Avenue. I'm here as a follow-up on a number of issues. I guess first and foremost, as Em indicated, 2014 annual action plan, seeing whether or not that was approved, known for a fact that it wasn't approved. I know Mayor Myra Campbell said she would take that off, and that's a good thing that she did say she would take it off, because quite frankly, if you, other council members don't know, including you Deputy Mayor, that the first person to receive notification of whether or not funds are awarded would be the mayor. Having said it all that, she's not here. Mr. Kelly, you're the city manager. What is the status on my questions regarding the CDBG fund? As well as, since somebody mentioned the Director of Licenses, and that is in a civil service position, the question also becomes, what is the council's policy on having qualified staff in these positions? Number one, to include the Community Development Director. And most importantly, what's going on with those funds? To your point, Councilwoman Amy Quinn, when you were talking about flagmen being funded, the issue also is, was it already approved in a HUD plan, CDBG plan? So in other words, CDBG funds are not just slush funds for whatever goes. They have to be appropriated and expended correctly. I also mentioned to you, Mr. Raffetta, with regards to whether or not, if funds are being spent on plans that were never approved, whether it was fraudulent, and I'll use another term that I was just giving, would that be official misconduct? I know you need the facts, and I've said it at the past couple of meetings about these funds. I'm asking for an answer at this local level at this point.
Ms. Ross, I don't believe any funds have been expended inappropriately. What funds were expended were previous years' funds that were approved. I don't believe anyone's 2014 action plan has been approved yet. So regarding qualified staff, I believe the staff that is managing the programs presently are all qualified and do a fine job running the program.
Okay, then let me just say to you this. Even when you spend existing funds, just as an extension point, you have to have what's called a plan adoption. So my question is, when were the public hearings for the reprogramming of funds? Because that's critical with HUD. That's why you have some investigations going on right now. Also, there are specific civil service requirements for every position, as you would know, Director of License, Community Development Director. I know what they are, because I know how to read. So my question is, again, you're saying, based on what, is this true?
I'm sorry, you threw away all your questions.
I'll wait for my answer.
Already threw away all your questions.
Well, my time is up, so I guess the question's on the table.
Okay. I don't know if a public hearing for reprogramming the funds were required. I don't know if there was any reprogramming that was necessary. I mean, that was primarily your last question, so I would have to get back to you regarding if a public hearing was necessary, and if so, if one was held and one wasn't held.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to know what my tax dollars have gone, because I'm reviewing the bill resolution. There's 2,000, I mean, you can always hunt the page, so please. Associated Humane Society, it's $4,427. I take it that's a yearly contract, and that's what we're paying. I'll go through this first, and then I'll give everybody a chance if they can give me some further information. I don't know what that contract is for, because they're out of town. If you have a dog running around, you call them up, and by the time they get here, the dog's gone.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. Any better? Don't ask me to do things like this. I don't think it's working. You know me, I don't guess. Better? Now it's okay. Verizon Wireless for the police department from January 2nd to February 1st, $3,020. And I'd just like to know how many have their cell phones up. I'm assuming, we shouldn't do that, but their cell phone. Treasure Island of Asbury Park, the fire department, the next page, Main Street 6, $1,908 for storage. I'd like to know what we're storing. Then it says County of Monmouth on the same page. We're paying them $1,380 for parts and labor, and I don't know if that's for the repair of the fire engine. I'd like an explanation for that one. And page, Cable Vision, the next page, page 7, Cable Vision of New York City for streets and road contractors. I don't understand that. And KRS Services on page 10, first installment, $22,187. I don't know what that is. I have no clue.
Which item was that?
It was KRS Services on page 10, $22,187.
Second one down.
Yeah. On-site computer services on the next page. I guess that's the little computers, he's over there on Main Street, I'm familiar with him. And it was $698, and I don't know why we needed to use him. And we have on page, we have an engineer, page 13, Insight Engineering. I know that company very well also. $1482 on the bottom for 527 Lake. And two more items on the following page, the 1302 and 1327. And I just wanted to know, are we forming engineering work out?
I know somebody else.
Yeah, would you want to take it up?
Sure, I'll start. Let me start with your last question, are we forming engineering services out? Not uncommon that we would. We only have one professional engineer. There's only so much Joe Coon, who's doing an excellent job, can do. So it's very typical that this organization would absolutely contract engineering work out for design of road resurfacing, curb and sidewalk improvements, any type of large job that would be outside the scope of what Joe could do on a daily basis. First item that you referenced is the Associated Humane Society. The city is responsible for picking up stray dogs, cats, or other animals. The city has a contract with the Humane Society. When an animal is picked up, an animal is also required to be kept a certain number of days, I believe it's seven. And the Humane Society provides that housing of that animal for the city, and then tries to put most of the animals up for adoption. I believe this is a monthly contract amount, so it would be times 12. Verizon Wireless for the police department. All the police have in their vehicles, which we call a mobile data terminal, those MDTs communicate over Verizon Wireless. So if a police officer is looking up a plate number, it is all done through that mobile data terminal, so he doesn't need to call someone else. So that is a fee for all the mobile data terminals in the vehicles. Fire Department, Treasure Island, if, I believe Deputy Chief may be here from the Fire Department, anyone from the Fire Department. Okay, that I don't know.
I do.
Great, John, thank you.
Because of the lack of room in the condition of the Asbury Park, Asbury Avenue Firehouse, they store records in this, and that's a yearly bill, and it's very cheap. And we have to keep those records by staple X amount of years. So it's storage of records. I question the same bill. So that's why I know the answer.
Thank you. County of Monmouth, parts and labor. The city has an interloper service agreement with the County of Monmouth where they repair our vehicles.
We save a lot of money, because we send the fire trucks down instead of up to Jordan, Jersey, to somebody's free time to tie. So it is a care service.
The $87 Cable Vision bill for streets and roads, I don't know, but if you provide me your email address, I would be happy to identify what that bill is.
We hire Cable Vision over here as our cables provider. They kind of make a presentation, they tell us what it's going to cost, and we hire them. That's the cost associated with it. When they say roads and mains, it's for the wires that are all over.
No, it's coming out roads and mains, because that's the Cable Vision at DPW 9 Main Street, and they have several TVs hooked up for weather, other things, and I'm sure that's it. Where usually Cable Vision's probably this and there 10 times, it's between 10 different departments.
But there are providers.
Correct, correct, correct.
I just, that Treasure Island for the records, that's for one month.
It's not.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I bet.
Any other questions?
But the Insight Engineering, just, you can up for it. Insight is the engineer for the planning board. And I believe, if you look at the bill, there's probably T in front of it, or something. It's coming out of a trust fund, where the applicant set up an escrow account, and the city's not actually paying for it. It's coming out of the escrow account, whoever applies to go in front of the planning board.
Patrick gave me permission to take his slot here. Warren Baumgartner, 50th Avenue. I had an interesting experience with the city's website over the last couple of weeks. Now, we all know the original website got hacked and got taken down, and now we have sort of a bare bones, rudimentary, functional website. Unfortunately, it's not as functional really as it should.
It's a splash page, and now they managed to completely go ahead. Yeah, it's not. It's a splash page, it's one page that links it.
Right, right. That's what I was looking for, the city website. Okay. The problem with it is, that should be corrected, is it's inconsistent in the information that provides. For example, a recent TRC meeting was prominently displayed on the front page in the middle column, giving details about what the application was and the times of the meeting. It's not even required to notice the public for TRC meetings, yet this notice was there, which was a nice courtesy provided. Just this past Monday, there was a planning board meeting, which appeared nowhere on the front page. The only little blurb that I found was in the calendar. If you click on the right, there's something that says Calendar of Events, and if you go through all of the bands and the things that are playing, and all the bars, eventually you get to 7 o'clock, and it says Planning Board, and that was it. No agendas or details. So what I'm asking for is, could we be a little more consistent? Obviously, someone is putting this data in there, but it's hit and miss about public information should be consistently provided. Planning Board, zoning Board, Environmental Commission, Shade Tree Commission, the things that are important to running the city should be prominently on the front page and consistently provided as information for meetings and agendas.
I couldn't.
Can we do that?
I couldn't. I don't think anybody's been arguing with you on that.
Who's running the site?
And Warner, you don't want to comment that we now have the city agenda and all the supporting documentation on Friday before the meeting?
I saw that. That is fabulous.
There you go.
Absolutely.
There you go.
No, I look for problems. That's mine. It's my profession. I look for problems and try to fix them.
We'll work on it.
All right, so maybe you could, you know, scrape down the website and the information content that's provided.
And for what it's worth, just on the website, we went through the applications to, we have narrowed down to three from 17, and we're interviewing people who are eventually going to, one of the three people are going to mention.
Build us a nice new one.
So God willing, we're going to have a functioning website.
All right, terrific. And I'm putting together a list of vines on trees for you, so I'll give that what we need to. All right, thanks.
Pat DeSala, Grand Avenue, Asbury Park. Welcome, I'm welcoming myself back from vacation. I see I missed the honeymoon period for our city manager by tonight's comments. Welcome to Asbury Park from the prime campus of fire. I didn't know I was to bring my Post-its next, council being up, sure to have them up here. Mine are just the little yellow ones, but I only have a couple items to ask for tonight. So rather than look for problems, I'm going to look for some solutions. So it seems that the problem that Warner may identify, and I hear it the microphone a lot, is lack of revenue in the city. And I think the best solution is to start building the most valuable real estate that we have in Asbury Park that's been city-making for 30 years. Now, I know a lot of people don't like Avanion, I think it's a great company, and it's not for everyone, but it's for some people. And the faster we get into ground, the faster we'll be able to take advantage of these historically low interest rates. When I bought my first house, Jimmy Carter was the president, and I believe the interest rate was 18%, if you remember back that far, as I do very well. And I don't know how much longer the banks are going to be on this sugar high of giving out 3.5%, 4% money. But every time the interest rate ticks up 1%, it decreases the person's ability to buy a home by about $75,000. Now, I personally have two projects that are about $15 million that I'd like to build in Asbury Park right now, but I can't, because they're in WRA. And for me to do those projects, we need the plan amendments that Don Sammet had told me last year we were going to get, and now he assures me most definitely it'll be done before November. But the more time that passes, the more jeopardy we place ourselves at, at missing this window of opportunity. We had the Go-Go 80s, that Mr. Carabetta got a skeleton up when it crashed. And then the Fishman's dawdled about during the largest real estate expansion that this country ever saw, that inevitably resulted in almost the downfall of the banking system with such a big expansion, that things got so overheated. So, I mean, though I would love SOHO lots at $1,500 a foot, I can assure you there's no buyers in Asbury Park for $1,500 for SOHO lots. And there are some buyers for the product that Avanion is going to offer, and there's going to be certainly buyers for the product that I would like to offer. And I'm unfortunately unable to offer that product until after the plan amendments are done. So probably the best way to handle business, the way I do it, when I see that I have a project that needs more cash flow, rather than turn off the hallway lights in the heat, I go around and I improve my apartments and raise the rents. So let's raise the rents. Thank you.
I can just say one thing on the, so the waterfront redevelopment amendments, right? The last conversation I had with Don was requesting a redline version of it. So when, as somebody who has read this plan a number of times, you read the 2002 plan, you read the recommendations from that committee that was formed, and then you read these new amendments. And so I know I personally, and I can imagine this is holding it up that much, have requested some sort of redline version, so I can figure out who got what, who asked for what. If we, if somebody got two stories higher, wouldn't we be getting returned for that? Because what I was given was just the amendments, without any sort of understanding on why we went four stories higher here, we gave half a block here, and I still don't understand exactly some of the things we got. So I know one of the things that we're waiting for is a redline version of the plan amendments. Would that be, that's a pretty fair statement, right, John?
I'm going to say something. I totally agree, but I agree with you, it's taking too damn long. I mean, this was supposed to be done close to three years ago now, after the lawsuit, the arbitration, it was like, hurry up and get a new redevelopment. And I'm not going to blame it on anybody, but I don't know if it's the city's fault, who's holding this up, because I hear the developers are keeping on changing the lines. And as far as I'm concerned, if somebody came before the mayor and council, and the lawyer said it was legal, and said, hey, look, we want to do something, but we need an amendment to the, I would say, yeah, I'll go for an amendment on each one, because now you just said that was a new one on May, I don't know what will be done before November. I mean, that's six months from now. So we're going to be another six months where you can't build, other people can't build. I agree with you, unacceptable to me, and I would have no problem with anybody, be it I Star, be it Mas Marquette, be it you, coming before the council, I don't know if it's legal, and saying, it's taking too long, but here's what I want to do on Block, whatever, 202. It caused for like, three stories in the original plan, but it's not feasible. I need six stories. And I would say, got it. But we got to speed that up, in my estimation. It is taking way too long. We're going on three years, and, I mean, I expected this July, when we got sworn in, so now it's November when we get sworn out, so I don't know.
On that, you know, the, I don't have a point at anybody or anything like that. The plan gets changed, they have to go through an application process. If they don't wait for the amendments, and they go ahead and apply, they got to go to planning and zoning, and it's a lot more expensive and it's a lot more arduous than if the plan is changed. And what Amy is talking about, there have been changes that were made, because some buildings went higher, some buildings went lower, some properties are not going to be built on now, and that's what's happened. And that's got to be codified, and that's got to be set in stone. Your redline copy really should tell you exactly which properties are, which properties have changed in height and density and that sort of thing, because that is what's happened on the oceanfront. But yes, I mean, let's get it done.
And a perfect example, I think a lot next to your building, Athen Web, where they have the trailers, it looks terrible and everything. I Star wanted to know, I Star wanted to build, rip all that down, build a very nice garage, temporary, temporary, until something's going to be built there, but the plan doesn't call for a temporary garage. And in this temporary garage, they were kind enough, they were going to give us X amount of, 1,000 square feet, I'm drawing this number, so we could store all of our beach equipment in there out of the elements. So instead of like, somebody looking out your windows and seeing this like, trailers and junk and everything, it would have been a nice garage. And we told Mr. Sherb and I Star, apply, we'll give you the okay. Just because it's not in the plan, to me, is ridiculous. It's a simple amendment, to me, it's a win for him, it's a win for us, it's a win for everybody, it's a win for your tenants looking down that, instead of them looking at garbage, they look at a very nice, beautiful storage shed, which if it was a nice plan, we're going to turn it down. But there's no flexibility in this plan, which is stupid, and I agree with you.
I'm sorry, try free time.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
My name is Alexis Kowalski, I'm with John C. Conover Agency, and I'm here to talk just comment about the summer certificate of occupancy that we hope you approve. We feel the agency, our colleagues, we feel that with is being approved, it will bring many people down to the shore, Town of Asbury Park, the rest of the shore area, bringing people to see the revitalization of the building, appreciate it like everyone else does, and it will increase much revenue to the businesses of this town. Bring on a lot of things, it will.
I think we're going to make you happy, John.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. What's the date on this, August 19, 2010?
I know what it says, but it still applies, because last week, it stopped the clock now. Last week, I could not make the meeting last week. I couldn't make the meeting two weeks ago when you passed the ordinance. This is from the state comptroller. It's not from any goof or person. It's the comptroller of the state of New Jersey. And he talks about tax abatements and pilot programs, how bad they are for people like us. Maybe in other towns like Jersey City, Hoboken or whatever, they're good, but not Asbury Park, it's one little mile. So I would like you to reconsider that ordinance that you passed two weeks ago. If you read this, and you'll see, this is not my words, this is his words. And Sue, I don't know, I read the article in the Coaster. I was astonished that you named three buildings. You named North Beach, Wesley Grove, and Vibe, and you said that they were tax abatements.
No, they were pilot programs.
Well, you say that in the paper.
They're pilot programs. In fact, they've come before us.
I know they're pilot programs. I didn't know there was a difference.
No, there is a difference, another difference. The question to me in the first one, about pilots and tax abatements.
Well, I would like you to reconsider this ordinance, because it's very damaging to every taxpayer in this city. I don't know what it is now, but a few years back when you started all this, it was 10 cents on our tax bill. Now it's probably 20 cents, I don't know, I don't know the exact amount, but I would like you to reconsider this ordinance and really seriously think about what you're doing. I don't, and I'd like a list of all the people I came here, because we have tax abatements or pilot programs. Is there such a list of people, businesses, or whatever? Is there a list? And that 2.4 million that was in that same article, could you tell me if that was for one year, that we lost revenue and value to our properties? 2.4 million?
Yeah, that was this 2013.
That was one year, right? It's ridiculous.
We didn't lose 2.4 million.
You can't afford to lose 10 cents.
We lost 2.4 million rateless.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, well, we can afford that?
No, but I did want to tell you that we lost $2 million in taxes.
No. 2.4 million, do you know that? I don't think, I don't think you realize what you're doing when you give people a pass not to pay full taxes. You have over 83 agencies in this town that do not pay taxes, they're all nonprofits, and they've been here for over 10 years. What have they done? You see any improvement in the poor or anybody else? I mean, like, you know, these people are coming to this town to make money off of us. They're not in Spring Lake, they're not in Bradley Beach, they're not in Interlaken, they're in Asbury, because they can make money here by doing the things that they do supposedly for the poor. And you know that's a fallacy. I'm sure you know it. Thank you. So, will I get that list? I would like the list. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I believe we can prepare that list, not a problem here.
All right, thank you.
Joe Warner, 1103 and 1/2, 15th Avenue. I'd just like to thank the council, it's good news that we're moving to green acres application, and I would add to Pat's feelings that if the city would have moved on green acres six, seven, eight years ago, we could have a couple million dollars in the bank to purchase the collective co-tracting, and that would be off the table. It seems like we have to wait until now to start everything. And if we all remember during the election, the old council, and this is really true, this was right on, you guys either directed Terry, or Terry directed, we don't know much about that work, but in the Sun, it was reported that you applied for green acres application month prior to the election. And I think we all knew that was a political issue, to be ready for the election. But then in the Sun article recently, it was reported that there was actually no application filed whatsoever. So that it was actually misleading or even a lie that you had applied is, was a concern, I guess, to me. I mean, I guess I shouldn't be surprised, but you've had misrepresented the facts in the past during the election, you did, you had some situation here swearing in. So it's just, to me, like, brought home the point that you were just dishonest with Republicans, continue to be, and I just wonder how the lawyers can have confidence in your, how, it's embarrassing for you, and I'm embarrassed for it. And I am just happy that we're moving forward with this project now within council, so thank you.
Thank you for your campaign speech. The, I can't speak with the city planner, the people that were directed to do the application, they're not here, you'd have to ask them about it, but we did go for green acres money more than one time, thank you.
Jerry Scram, Long Branch, New Jersey. Sue, you mentioned to Rita that you knew the difference between a pilot program and a catch abatement. Could you explain what's?
Jerry, can I just say something? I'm probably not going to answer you, and you and I can have a conversation over there. I do know the difference. I was involved with Scotland with the pilot program, especially with Vibe, and you've asked me 100 times because you think I don't know what it is, so I'm going to maybe your time to ask your questions, and then you can actually have a personal conversation.
I'll wait for your answer. I'll use my three minutes to wait, because I really believe you don't know it.
You can wait, and you're not going to get an answer.
Come on, wait three minutes, okay, wait.
So go ahead.
That way they'll know that you really don't know it.
Absolutely. I will absolutely have that conversation with you, I'm not going to waste the time right now. So go ahead.
I believe you don't know it. Just like I don't know who wrote the letters for the Coaster and the Tri-City News, I don't think they were written by different people.
Go ahead, continue.
I'm waiting for your answer. You told me you knew the difference, I believe you don't.
You don't have any other questions?
Your only question I have to do, I'm glad you had a little bit tonight, I'm glad you had to the classroom.
Me too.
I'm really happy you had a little bit tonight.
Do you know they don't pay school?
I think the audience would like to know the difference. You read that paper, you said it was 2010, that was the only thing that you got out of that whole little paper that you gave her.
You know, go ahead, Derek, keep going, because I will have a personal conversation with you.
You don't have a personal conversation with me, I think the audience needs to know. I'm sorry, but campaign speech, I think you should be able to tell us. You don't have any answer.
I don't have an answer for you.
Yeah, we can go.
When you start paying taxes in this city, maybe.
I've paid a lot of taxes in this city. I did a lot. But I had a good enough answer not paying the taxes I did.
You want to say that you're not getting your money from pilot programs, is that what you want? That when we get our, in a pilot program, we give our taxes, if not more, but that the schools unfortunately don't get there, and then we have to pay the county, is that what you want? I know, I know, so go ahead.
And you guess that's the only time as well?
Yeah.
75.
60. Well, I won't waste a good thing, but I just wanted to get my point left, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Bill resolution, including the curb vouchers, board of education and payroll, only $2,167,837.75.
I was going to ask for a bill to be pulled tonight, I talked to Ricky Garts to see how it go, and he suggested we go ahead and we, it was Redwood to Commutation, over $8,000 and change, I just don't know what they do, can't get a good answer. And he asked me just to go ahead and pay, maybe I'll send the checks and get the answers.
Yes, Quinn.
Yes, everything other than the needs, I think.
Yes.
Workers' compensation, first one, two items, $212.01, next one for four transactions, $2,202.57, last one for three transactions, at $2,615.40.
Yes.
Yes, Quinn.
Yes.
Item F1 is the special events application, as outlined by Tom Gilmore at the work session.
If I can just interject before you take a vote on that. With regard to the skate and surf festival, my recommendation is at this time that you would move forward to reserve the dates that have been requested by the applicant, which were May 17th and 18th, and that final approval of the special events permit would be subject to and contingent upon the execution of a contract with the city in a form satisfactory to the city attorney, as well as the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund or insurance carrier. Further approval of the mayor and council is required for this special event permit. But you're expressly reserving the dates with the understanding and intention to move forward to the next step, but it's subject to and contingent upon the contract that we spoke about earlier during the work session.
So move.
And there were other special events applications and weddings that Mr. Gilmore set forth.
Yes.
Yes, Quinn.
Yes.
Resolution, the first one, resolution, city of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, New Jersey, of mending the temporary appropriations for 2014 until the regular budget adopted, and that's the current fund, the store utility fund, the beach utility fund, the parking utility fund.
Move it.
Second.
Councilor Lefredo.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Resolution, the first one, resolution, city of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, New Jersey, of mending the temporary appropriations for 2014 until the regular budget adopted, and that's the current fund, the store utility fund, the beach utility fund, the parking utility fund.
Move it.
Second.
Councilor Lefredo.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Resolution, the first one, resolution, city of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, New Jersey, of mending the temporary appropriations for 2014 until the regular budget adopted, and that's the current fund, the store utility fund, the beach utility fund, the parking utility fund.
Move it.
Second.
Councilor Lefredo.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Next item is resolution authorizing transfer, 2013 appropriation reserve budget fiscal year 2014, a total amount of 200, or 300,000.
Move it.
Second.
Councilor Lefredo.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Next one is a resolution to cancel taxes on city-owned property, amount of $6,785.30.
Move it.
Second.
Councilor Lefredo.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
Outlined by the Tax Assessor, Work Session, the Resolution authorizing the order to contract or property data collection and the performance of a five-year program of annual internal inspection of 20% of all real property within city to Realty Data Systems, LLC.
Move it.
Second.
Councilor Lefredo.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
The three ordinances for introduction, public hearing will be at the second meeting in April, or April 16th, and with the change in summer rental of fee of $200, $200, $200. First ordinance is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits to establish a cap, bank pursuant to NJS A484-4514. The second ordinance is, the ordinance to mending and supplementing Chapter 12, title Building Housing, revised, to Asbury Park. Or to establish a new section there, known as Section 12-8, titles, summer rental regulations. The last ordinance for introduction, fees for emergency medical services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilor Lefredo.
Yes.
More.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Henderson.
Yes.
And when's the public hearing going to be held on those three ordinances, Steve?
April 16th.
The final items, decision with respect to the RCE bids.